Okay then, ladies and gentlemen, I think it's about time to start. So first thing of course is if you need to know, if the alarm goes off, there are two fire exits. One is the way you've all come in and the other one is behind me. So just go out and we'll be safe, meet up outside. So, welcome to our meeting. And first... Thank you for that. Something... I'm just gonna bring that, you can do that while I'm on this.
Sure. Hi, I just want to say that we're kind of experimenting this evening by trying to record a meeting. And so I've set up this camera.
Which was pointing towards?
Well, I was gonna say, it's actually pointing right at you, which was so... You're missing that. No, the point is, it's a 360 camera, so I'll edit it afterwards. If anybody doesn't want to be in at all, I think guys will mention that, I'll make sure that doesn't happen. It'll mostly face this way, but if somebody wants to ask a question and they wanna be on that, I can do that. But if anyone desperately doesn't want to be on it at all, guys already said, does anyone else? You know, make sure you do not accent that here on YouTube. Okay, just so...
Is this recording the talking of the message of the meeting?
I hope so.
Anyone's free to record it. You have to do it in an office, isn't it? Right, so... Yeah, is there anyone who doesn't want to? So that's okay. Yeah, right, is everybody happy with the meeting being recorded?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay then, that's fine. Yes, that's what I was doing to next. Okay then, so is there any member of the public who would like to have a three-minute speed? Yes, sure?
Anyone else who'd be going first?
Okay, okay, thank you. So yes, there are just a couple of points. I mean, I know tonight's agenda, you've got the budget, or the draft budget to discuss. So there are a couple of points on, that I wanted to mention on that. First of all, the precepts. Obviously, I mean, with the council tax, we're governed in as much as how much we can increase the council tax by. It's going up by 1.99%. Anything more than that, we'd have to go for a referendum. Of course, the same set of rules don't apply to the precepts that you set. And actually, the precept looks like it's gonna go up quite significantly in this current budget. I mean, looking at your forward budget detail back in April, the current, currently 431,000. And then it forecasts over the next four years to go up to 446,000 by the fourth year. But now it seems that actually, not four years, but in less, in one year, it's gonna go up to 464,000. So that's a jump that exceeds what the four-year budget was only in April. So that's concerning. And I think we need really a very good explanation of why there's such a huge increase in the precepts. I'm hoping that's gonna be forthcoming during the meeting. I mean, I don't know, for the sake of public confidence, I mean, is it more concrete tables or is it something more important? Is it to cover the length of your piece of string? This 1.5 billion pounds loan repayments? So we just need some confidence that there's good grounds for such a huge increase in the precepts. The second thing is that you're discussing the budgets. So it looks like you've formed a working group, which is great, and you've come up with a draft budget. It's not available in any of the documents I can see, so it's not something that I or the public or anyone else can scrutinise the details of this draft budget. Again, in Baines, the draft budget is, it goes to a scrutiny panel. It's freely available online for the public to scrutinise. It then goes to full scrutiny by the full council before it can be adopted. And this gives the public an opportunity to make comments where perhaps they think there may be areas that you've overlooked, areas where they feel that the council should be looking at greater investments and such like. But that, but it can't be scrutinised because it doesn't exist in the documents. So I think, given that the working party was based up of nine of the 11 councillors here, I'm not sure whether we're gonna hear much of a debate tonight, because debates already happen behind closed doors. So, I mean, I don't know if this is going to be just a box-toing exercise tonight, just to rubber stamp what you've actually already decided in a private meeting. So we'll wait and see if there are any debates, but if it's possible to actually put that budget out there for people to review, it would be useful.
Can I comment on that? Can I respond to that?
Yes.
And yeah, I always want to promote my website, but the budget is published. It is on the website.
On the website. I did dig around and found these documents here and there.
Yeah.
I'm looking at tonight's agenda where you've got all the documents for the agenda, with the exception of the budget.
That's a fair point. It's done, on the website, it's done under the traditional papers folder, which might not have been clear. Make sure, send me a copy now if you like, but it was published. Before the breakdown of the cost savings and stuff, so that's unfortunately, I haven't seen that.
Okay. But the point is, the point is, if it's on the agenda tonight, the papers should have been, I think, should have been in the documents.
So it's not on the printout?
And anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, I think my appeal, I've got going minutes because I've shed a little bit of meaning. My appeal was really to try and remain calm on the budget. I think there's been a lot of, I think, discourse that's been poisoned recently. And there's freezing cuts, I know there's talk about it, and there's gonna be scrutiny and things. But I don't think rushing into decisions at the moment is what council or the community need. I think we've got until February to make these decisions. And I think consult properly with the community groups and the projects that are gonna be hit by potential freezes. It would be good, I mean, I'm chairman of this, I'm obviously the manager of this, and the community trust has laid on the table. But I think that these decisions don't need to be taken, you can have a good consultation, make sure these go through. And I appreciate every penny spent, it's gonna be scrutinised, especially in the election year. But it's important that we analyse both the economic and community benefit cases for all of the events and activities, and ensure that the community continues to provide the most important stuff. I mean, I know we're talking about substantially increasing the budget. And at 80% terms loans, I mean, there's a tenant. It's not quite as much, it's not quite as scary as perhaps people are making out £10. I think, is it, is that fair? I mean, I'm not saying you should put it up by that matter at all, but I mean, you've just gotta be careful, it's a couple of rest, the fat sounds tricky. If you, that's the cost of everything, and £10 extra, I think, to make sure that you provide community spaces, youth work, to keep the high street affordable, attractive, sorry, to make sure it's comprehensive, youth provision, things like the town ward, which is really important, I think we've got, we've got to analyse all of these things really closely. I don't think it's something that should just be checked out today and decided. But I mean, talk about the budget's going up, but also, I mean, a lot of these costs are coming in because Baines aren't putting their precept up. I mean, 1.99%, whatever it's matching. Perhaps if they could put up a little bit more than the town council, the community wouldn't take the burden and stuff like doing the gardens or doing the youth work, I mean, Baines used to provide youth work, town councils or the community trust. We're trying to pick up pieces there. So I mean, there's reasons why perhaps the town council or the community trust are asking for lots more money. We're asking for lots more money for youth provision because suddenly, we're the ones being asked to go and do this. This isn't, I mean, it's very easy to say that Baines aren't putting up that much, but if you're dropping things, then somebody else is gonna have to pick up, or people are gonna be hurt. And I mean, you've got to look at the other things, I mean, if you look at the unit cost database, the youth club, every, I mean, it's easy to say all the money, you should say money here or there, but every couple of freezes, every pass, it's crossed on to another part of the public purse. That's my point. People worrying about the town hall, or the benefits of the community buildings, the community groups, these, there's savings elsewhere that these create. In 2018, we did a cost benefit analysis using the unit cost database, which is made more low. You can check out each child, we see in council in somewhere at the town hall, or a council that's funded by the youth work, saves almost £300 to the public purse. Each elderly person who is kept at home or independent by the social events, or even the groups like A K's dementia group, that saves the public purse £555 per week, which can add up to 28,000 a year, over 28,000 a year, so nearly 29,000. The NCT passes and things that are hosted at the community buildings and spaces, they save £950 per participant to the public purse each year, per person. Anti-social incidents like the youth club, this and the youth work, every anti-social incident in 2018, this was costing £675 to the public purse to save. So I mean, youth work might seem a lot, if any of those kids went through them, there's an anti-social incident, and you're dealt with by the authorities, you're just pushing the cost on. So with inflation, these costs are probably even a lot higher today. So I know everyone in the room, I think, wants the best for the community, but I don't think this is as easy as cutting things. And I think it's very easy to come in and just say, we've got freezes, everything straight away. I think we need to have a look at it properly, and the community trust will be willing to engage. I think we want to engage other community groups that run events, the cricket club, or wherever, that run events and run activities, and see what things can afford to be cut. But yeah, I think it's very easy to say that the trusts or all you guys are just putting money up. I don't want it to be spooked into rushing into freezes, rushing into cuts when you've got time. Or I think you can do proper consultations, there's good arguments on both sides, which I'm not sure was portrayed as some of that. But I'd like to put cases forward for some of the things, and I think there's also ways, some services we can probably fund in other rooms to take the burden off the town council. But I think we need to have an open discussion, or we need to have a consultation discussion. I think if you rush into a decision today, there's a chance that a lot of things could be cut. And I mean, that could come back in, but not just maybe you at the ballot box, but I mean, it could also hurt individuals. It'd be most vulnerable for people that those costs have been passed on to. That's my second.
Well, thank you very much. Okay then, so thank you both for your comments, and then we'll move on. So apologies for absence. I'm a little hurt, she's still bored. So without that. And item 157, mayor's announcements. Well, once again, there's a nice list of things that I've been involved with for the month. And the start, the very first one of the month was the Summer Valley FM annual celebration. Richard knows all about that over there. It really was interesting, the information we got, there were several of us there, weren't there, several councillors there? And it was really nice, and also to meet the people involved with what you do. So that was really, really good meeting, that was lovely. Then on the 11th, which is the actual remembrance service day, remembrance service at the cemetery. There weren't so many people there, but I have to say the weather wasn't that brilliant, so that's fair enough. But it was just the actual date, so. And also, the following day was the dressing of the graves. And this was for specific people who served the country and came from this town or this area. So it's rather nice that that was done on that day. And on the same day, on that Saturday, the 12th, was in Wells, the installation of the new Bishop of Bath in Wells. Now, if you've ever, I don't know if any of you have been there to the cathedral in Wells, it's a lovely building, it really is, and the services they have there are brilliant. And so what was really nice too was that the new bishop would appear to have a great sense of humour. He had a big smile on his face and everything he said was amusing, which is great, I just love it. So both Richard and I were there, we were both given a tree each for planting in our town. So that's something we're gonna sort at a later date, get that sorted. Then on the 13th, of course, was remembrance service, the main one, the official one. And on the High Street, I don't know how many people were there, but I reckon there were several thousand. It was absolutely incredible, the number of people there. Yeah, really, really nice. On the 14th was the Carnival Evening. That again, the High Street was absolutely packed, packed with people. It was wonderful, and I loved the music, couldn't help but dance to it all, it was brilliant. Yes, I know, you thought I was being silly. But I thought one of the wonderful things, those of you who were there, did you notice the Jubilee float? The one at the front, which was the one that was in London for the Queen's Jubilee? It was the actual float, and it was fantastic, yeah. On the 16th, we had the reaffiliation of the British Legion, whereas the groups from two different places joined up again. And it was wonderful to be able to go along, chat to all the cadets, and find out what difference it made to their lives to actually be part of the, you know, the cadet force. And it was really good because so many of them had got different things that they'd joined for, and they'd made lots of friends, so that was great. And on the 22nd, I'm gonna say this, was Steve Plumley's award as councillor of the year for Baines. That was brilliant, yes, and so well deserved. I've worked with Steve for a long, long time. And, you know, you try and ring the house, he's not there because he's always out doing something for us. So I just think it was wonderful. And would you like to say a couple of words?
No.
No?
Well, it's nice to be recognised, you know, after this year, it'll be the 12th year, so that was good. And it's thankful for you and Richard turning up to support me. And I was given two trees to be planted, so we've got lots of trees to be planted. I was, one tree was planted in Henrietta Park to commemorate the award. I was also given two trees to plant somewhere else in Missinworth, but yeah, thank you all for your support anyway. I couldn't do it on my own anyway, so I've got lots of help.
But it was brilliant, really appreciated what you do. Following on from that, 24th was the switching of the Christmas lights. Now, we couldn't have a party, but hopefully you've all seen the tree, and it is nice, isn't it? And everyone I speak to says how nice it is. So yeah, I'm pleased about that. We, you know, we appreciate that we couldn't, because of all that happened and the speed at which it had to be done, we just couldn't get everything else organised. So, oh, well, that's a little silly. So yeah, that was unfortunate. And finally, the children's Christmas party yesterday, which was just out of this world. There were more people there than there have been before, aren't there? And the children just absolutely loved it. But then, of course, we have a brilliant entertainer for them then, so he was really good. And of course, they absolutely loved Father Christmas. Father Christmas. And I've got some photos, and the elf sitting over there. And yes, and when we were all in photos, it was Pete who took the photos. So, but I've got some on my phone, if anybody would like to have a look at Father Christmas with his elf, and the children coming up for all their little gifts, which was great, yes. And the other thing I will say is the number of parents who approached me and said how grateful they were for all we'd done organising it for them. And they, that is so, that I can't remember, I started counting them, but I think I got to about 14 of the parents there who came and said how brilliant it was, and they were so appreciative. So that's, that was really nice. So that's the end of the mayor's announcements. Does the deputy mayor have anything to say to answer any of that?
Not really. I was at the farmers' market on Sunday and Saturday, sorry, at a fantastic time, which he was there. Really want to encourage more councillors next year, come down and mix with the community and speak to the traders, and find out what they want us to provide, they want to provide a thriving High Street. And it's been really, really fun. And they were, it was very complimentary of the tree as well, so.
Yeah. Okay then, on to item 158, town clerks' report. Everybody's had a copy of it, does anybody have any questions about the report?
Couple of things, one, the sign, the local sign, so I've already replied to that. But should we have the town council logo on it?
On the local sign?
Either that, I could just stand next to the sign and just teach them.
You'd risk your life there.
Well, I know, but I noticed it's not there.
Yes, no, that's fine, yeah.
That's fine. And then one other request, and I don't know if it should go to you or not, but people have asked for more information about what's happening inside the town hall. And maybe possible to get one of the workmen or something, maybe carry a camera down through the building or something, and we could stick that on a YouTube channel, and you'd actually see something like that. I don't know if that would be possible, but it would be a nice archive.
Jo, we take pictures every Friday, she goes in and takes pictures, and we can upload them.
Perfect, well, I might just get the old, the ever-present selfie stick, and then I can add it into a nice 360 video, which people can actually walk through themselves.
Okay. So on to, oh, is everybody happy then? Yeah? Okay, item 159, generations of interest? No? Okay then, so item 160, exclusion of present public. So, all seen that, happy with that? I would just like to introduce one of our visitors today, Deb White from Alka. And looking for your approval that she stays with our, after the exclusion of present public, to go through the, those sections, and, well, the confidential bits. Yes, because she can give us any help or advice if we need it. Proposal, anyone second, like second? Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah? Deborah could help if we had any questions that we didn't, couldn't work, you know, the final answers to, so that you knew what was happening.
Would it help if I explained my role?
Yes. All right, suspend standing orders, Deborah expanding.
Okay, AVE Local Councils Association, we're a membership organisation to support the work of Town and Parish councils. So we're completely independent, we offer advice, legal advice, HR advice, finance advice, on policy process and procedure within Town and Parish councils, so we're often the legal advisers to councils as well. And so if a council wishes to have a third party present who can independently advise on issues, that's the role that Alka plays. And so it's completely confidential. Those of you that have done my training will know that you can come to me and ask questions and it will never be passed on. And so it's, 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 Alka exists to support the council lawyers and the clerks. So unlike the Society of Local Council Clerks, who act on behalf of the clerks, we act on behalf of the whole council as advisers. So if the council resolves to include us in a confidential session, we're seen as legal advisers, and that's completely acceptable, but I understand if you don't wish to do that.
I'd personally thank you for that, that makes an awful lot more sense, I think I could support that.
Okay, so, right, can we go through this again, then, proposal? And second, right, good. And everybody happy, or those happy, say yes? And those not?
And can we change, can we both, can we lay votes on that?
Oh, yes.
The reason I ask, we don't normally, but yeah, it shouldn't come still this time around.
Right, okay then, so we go on now to item 161, minutes of the last meeting. Council meeting held on the 7th of November. Are you all happy with those?
All with a proposal.
Yeah? Second, Gordon? So, this is it, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah? Okay, so I'll sign them. Okay then, so on to item 162, local reports from the town council's standing committees. And I think that's, that leaves over to you, Gordon.
I have nothing to add apart from that will be the minutes.
Item 163, reports from councillors attending meetings of outside bodies. Yes, Roger?
I just want to give a quick follow-up to the item about park skateboarding and the skate park where I met with Lucy, which was there, Alex and I met with her again the other week, and she's put a bid in to spread trust, a few thousand pounds, to do work around the hub and for a cell to provide facilities and equipment for young people, so she can do skateboarding activities on there. And we discussed plans for working on the hub, and so there was our, so just to keep you updated that that things are, we reported with the skate park and activities organised on there, and with the youth club, container, this. But nothing to find amongst yet.
Yeah, good to hear that, anyway, yeah. Anyone else? No? Okay, apologies for that. Item 164, accounts for payment, purchases over £250 to start with. Anyone have any queries, any questions?
Who is an item 16 and a half thousand pounds for the, for your hub? Do we have that as part?
That was for the connection of the roof staff.
Right, thank you ma'am, well, that was a while ago.
Yes, they haven't sent anyone over.
So, everyone happy with those? Okay then, purchases under £250. No one else? Okay then, so we'll move on then to item 165. The monthly reports. Any queries now? Took a lot of going through, mate.
Might just mention the PSDF again.
The application has actually been filled out today, and it will be gone off tomorrow. We've done it this afternoon.
Because that was quite a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, no, we've done it this afternoon.
Any interest we can get, please? Would be good, really.
No other queries? Okay then, we'll move on to item 166, town hall. To note the update of the town hall transformation as a report, so if you want to suspend your standing orders, you can make that. Yeah, if we, we do that, suspend standing orders. Introduce Nicola to give us a report.
Thank you, sorry for standing your last month, but I find it was my turn with Covid, so I didn't think you'd thank me for bringing that down here. So work's continuing on site, we still have a contractual completion date of 17th of May 2023. Most of the work today has been about the demolition, but also refining the temporary works that are needed. Um, most of the work today has been about the demolition, but also refining the temporary works that are needed to prop. Um, the, first of all, the spine wall, um, and then the removal of the spine wall before the permanent footings go into the market space. We continue to have weekly site meetings with the architect, Sean PH Three. Also recently, a lot of tenders by the structural engineer, just as we talk a lot about the ground conditions that we've discovered, the results of the. Um, the core drilling surveys, et cetera. So the sum of knowledge about the bedrock, the conditions, et cetera, is a lot greater over the last few weeks than it was before. Um, the archaeological watch and brief course is continuing as we start to go into the ground. Um, in terms, that's all in terms of phase one. For phase two, and we've completed the procurement of the architect, which was carried out by a contracts finder. There was a very, very strong field of eleven architects submitting for this, contrasting with the two, I think, tenders that we got for the phase one bit. So clearly it's very busy out there in the marketplace. Um, but following a, I have to say, a very, a very, I suppose, a very good procurement process. Inasmuch as we had so much strong competition there, so it was a very difficult tendering process. Um, we've now appointed Sean from PH Three, so the current architect. But obviously he had to go through that tendering process and be the most competitive price and the most appropriate qualified in order to secure that. Um, the next appointment for phase two will be the mechanical and electrical engineer and the structural engineers, which have already gone out for competitive prices from three different companies each. In order for detailed design can get going on phase two, before any of that work can be procured. So in terms, that's a quick summary, in terms of programme, as I mentioned, we're on site and we still have a completion date of the seventeenth. Um, we have experienced some delays in getting, as the floor has been opened up and refining the temporary works. Um, foundations, so there have been some delays there. I'm awaiting an updated contract programme, but at this stage, relatively early in the scheme. It's hoped that any delays we can make up for later on during the programme as we get going properly with that. I've got a summary of the procurement and the timescale for phase two on there as well. So hopefully, as I say, the architects appointed, the mechanical and electrical and structural engineers would like to get through to this side at Christmas, if that's possible. In order that detailed design and cost review can take place in January and February next year. With a view to procurement then February to May, mobilisation in June and work on site from June twenty three to May twenty four. So following very hard on phase one, if that's achievable. One of the major discoveries we've made on site is that in the south west corner, so rear TSB lane. Um, there has been severe damp ingress over in that corner over the years, which has resulted in some of the timbers being rotten. Not many and not as extensive as it could be, but there's been a timber report carried out on that. And obviously the recommendations of that work need to be for the structural integrity of the building, that will need to be carried out. Um, but I think it's, it's, of course, largely hidden behind cement render. And what it looks like has happened because the ground level's so much higher outside, you've had the cement, so the water has come in, it hasn't gone anywhere, it's sort of sat in the wall. Hence some of the problems with the bearings. Um, but I think just an illustration really of why it's a good time to be carrying out this work on the building. And rather than sort of giving it a lick of paint, it's really going root and branch and starting to address some of these issues.
That was supposed to have been dealt with by Baines before they handed the building over to us. But they've handed over a sum of money to meet the cost of doing all that. There was talk of the French drain being placed along that.
Yeah, and, and French drain is definitely still one of the considerations. Um, there's got to be a little bit more work excavating outside the building to understand a bit more what the ground has made up of there. But yeah, that sum of money was transferred. Um, it may well, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to, you know, especially when you have things like the cement, the internal cement render has compounded the problem. So it may well be that actually we don't need to come up with something intrusive, it's simply that removing that cement render gives it sufficient space to breathe. That some of those issues are kind of alleviated just by exposing that, that stone. Um, so, yes, it, it's, it's not, I suppose it's the kind of thing you always discover when you start opening up. Unfortunately, you have a good contingency sum in your budget to address these kinds of issues when they, they come to light. Um, but obviously, having found it, we have to deal with it properly and make sure that particularly if it's, it's not cosmetic, it's structural. And that's particularly where there are already suggestions, there's been, for example, infestation or wet rot or anything else like that, that we tackle it now. So you've got a building in good health going forward.
So is there always going to be a problem because of the differential in the height? The, the TSB building is obviously a lot higher than the.
Yeah, and I think this is where that question of a French drain comes in, because you're right, you have to tackle it on two sides. Yes, you can take the render off on the inside so that any water coming through isn't getting trapped in between the, the cement and. Because obviously, as you know, the cement is, nothing will get through cement, whereas your limestone will fail if it, if it's become soaked. So yeah, there's that side, but as you say, it's that, because we can't change the ground level there, we've got to live with that ground level. Um, so French drain is certainly one of the potential solutions to consider. Um, the other thing being if we can do anything to maybe slightly adjust the fallout or something to make sure that it's going away from the building, far from rolling to water. But it's all these kind of considerations we've got to put into it, so we don't just do something neeja, that seems easy at the time. But actually defers the problem to later down the, down the timescale, so it'll come up and bite, bite on the bottom, as it were, at a later day. So.
What's a French drain?
Oh, French drain, so basically, um, instead of having kind of a solid, a solid bit of ground like tarmac or whatever, and then your wall there. So everything's just rolling in and also underneath the tarmac, everything's just absorbing, creeping in that way. You dig a channel and then fill it with sort of gravel or something permeable like that. Because you're hoping to trap some of that and stop it making its way, so it's literally being like a sponge, you've got it soaking up into the wall. So it's just, it's another, um, again, it's, it's not, it's not a high-tech solution, it's not a perfect solution. But i- if you're, if you're tackling it from both sides, so if you're trying to minimise the water coming from that side. And you've given the water somewhere to evaporate from that side, you're sort of maximising your chances then.
Hmm, yeah, I don't know if you've explained that, because I've used it before, but I didn't know what it's called.
Yeah, it's like a soak away, basically, yeah, yeah, exactly. Why it's called a French drain, I can't tell you.
But does that mean that because Baines has provided funding for the known problem, does that mean there is no extra cost?
Um, I think when that, the Baines funding was handed over, it was on the basis of, I think, they had an estimate. And AccuEd check the estimate for the works that were within that, and it seemed about right. Um, I think I'd have to look at it in a bit more detail to double check exactly what's in that. I think it was a fixed sum, wasn't it, um, that it, that it was given for? But I will look into that again, just to be sure about, because I think that was partly to do with the rainwater guts and pointing as well, wasn't it? So it, it had to stretch quite a long way, whereas in all fairness, I think if we do go down, you know, have the recommendation of the French drain. And that's sort of additional then to what that, that funding was granted for specifically. But having said that, it would still need to come out of your overall project contingency, which is for that purpose effectively, which is those. Known unknowns that you find with this very building.
I just have one quick question, kind of pick on what you said a little bit earlier, it's, um, you know, we're happy to do this properly. But now that you've found the, now that you've found these issues, is it fair to say, because a lot of, there's a lot of controversy, something we don't know necessarily, how, how essential the works were. Whether we had to do anything with the town hall, but would you say now that, that it's clear that this work had to be completed sooner or later? And it was going to be a lot cheaper to do it sooner, otherwise the entire integrity of the building would be.
Eventually, yes, and the hard thing is sort of how, would that be three years or five years, or might you just about get on to ten years with it? It's sooner or later, it, it would have, I mean, it was already starting to make itself apparent in terms of the dampness and some of the finishes coming off. There was a corner, wasn't there, Jo, a particular corner? Um, so what's, and, and, and the thing is, this is, the, the issue of, um, concrete-based cement in historic buildings is endemic. And, and so, you know, but it, it causes issues and you might not see them everywhere straight away. But then what, what we hadn't known until we opened it up was how that impacted the timber. And that's, that's kind of the more worrying one, if you like, because some of that you can sort of think, oh, it's cosmetic or whatever. But obviously, when it comes to the fact that, for example, on the, the first floor in that corner, there's a, a, a wall plate, sort of a timber that's, it's on the top of the wall and then has. So you've got a wall plate and then you've got your bearings of your principal joints, your structural joints resting on that wall plate. That wall plate was very wet, so at the moment, fortunately, it hasn't, uh, that water ingress hasn't carried down into the bearings. So this is good timing, if you like, because, you know, it's one thing replacing a, a, a wall plate that's, you know, like that. You don't want to be in a position where you're having to replace structural bearings, that's a whole different ballgame. So, um, from what we can see, you know, i- i- if you've gone back in five or ten years, you might find something considerably more nasty is the risk. If that, it had more time to, to travel to those, um, principal structural members.
Thank you.
Pleasure, so we're dealing with that one. Um, in terms of finance then, the, the overall cost of the programme remains the same, we still have that general contingency. Um, though of course, any calls on that contingency will need to be flagged up and approved before they're instructed, because that's a budget that's kept on your side. In terms of phase two, obviously part of the mechanical, electrical and the structural engineers' appointments is to progress with those detailed design. So we can get up-to-date costings then for the detailed design, rather than the, the Ruber three costs we've got from November last year. Based on the planning level, the planning level of detailed drawings. Um, in terms of variations, we've had a few relatively minor ones. Um, but as you can see, number nine on there, additional works to rotten wall, wall plates and joists, that's what I've just been describing. As soon as we have a, a design solution for that and cost for that, that will come to you as a request against contingency. Um, but that is a good example of exactly why there is a contingency in the pot, because you never quite know everything until you open it up.
Could I ask about, um, the removal of asbestos, is that considered?
Uh, yes, so the vast majority has been, um, removed. There was a, a survey done before the contractor started on site, which was a refurbishment and demolition survey. Um, unfortunately, there were some areas that that survey did not pick up, so there was a need for some further asbestos sampling and additional asbestos removal. Um, there was a provisional allowance in the contract of, um, three and a half thousand pounds, which we believe is still notwithstanding sufficient to cover all of the asbestos that needs removing. There, there was quite a lot, I mean, there, there always is, as you can imagine. Uh, one additional bit of sampling that the contractor asked for, um, was for anthrax sampling as well. Um, now, normally anthrax tends to be in sort of pre-early nineteenth century, because of course they used to add it to the plaster, they used to add horsehair to the plaster and that, that could. You know, I don't think there's a high potential, but there is the potential for that to carry anthrax. So that was an additional, uh, piece of sampling we did at very minimal cost, which has then reassured the contractor that, no, there is no anthrax. Um, but if you're dealing with a kind of pre-early nineteenth century building, it's something to be really aware of if you're ever disturbing any plaster. Yeah? Um, so, yes, that's, that's a summary of the report actually.
Thank you very much, I think that actually covered one six six and one six seven, didn't it?
Mm hmm.
All on that, so thank you very much for coming and giving that report. And we'll now re-inspare standing orders, okay? And on to item one six eight, budget for twenty three, twenty four? Yes, twenty two, yeah, twenty three, twenty four, right? So we've got a budget proposal from the working party. And, uh, so it's been already suggested that we're not going to use it, isn't it?
Yeah, I've got a couple of quick comments, um, from, if I may. Um, so the first thing I want to say was, uh, thanks to the staff for, um, working so hard to prepare another revised budget. I know this is quite a painful process, quite an important process. Um, and I think we'd all agree that eight percent increase, if that's what it is, eight, eight percent increase of precincts better than, than fifty. And, but however, I've spoken to quite a few residents about this and sounded it out, and I think, I, I don't feel we've got the balance quite right yet. I think, um, we, we've, we've managed to kind of get the pre, potential precinct increase down. But it's still gone up and people are saying that we need to cut everything. And I don't think that's something I can really sell to people, something I can really promote myself. And, uh, we still have our financial guidelines, our principles, about thirty three percent on essential services. And thirty three percent on council determined expenditure, and it's really the council determined expenditure which has been squeezed. So, um, on the current proposals, by my calculations, we would see forty three percent on essential services. And nineteen percent on community support and new effectiveness. So that's really kind of gone in this direction. And I went through all our previous budgets and, um, it's interesting to note, I think, the year before this current, do we call it a session? Before we got elected, um, essential services budget was, was under thirty three percent. So it's kind of on our watch, I think we've, we've accidentally got a little bit out of balance. And as councillor Hughes correctly pointed out, we've exceeded our five year projections in the next year. So I think we have to have another meeting. We have to, um, yeah, we have to have another meeting, we have to do better. I think we are in a bit of a pickle, but I think what we need to do as well is whatever budget we finally agree on. We need to put in place a strategy, a plan to get back on target that we want to be on. So it might be we make some changes to our ratios and it might be that we change some of our principles. But at the moment, our principles are there and we're not sticking to them, so I think we need to take that into account. I think we also need, as Alex very wisely said, to, to, to maybe ask some other people that are going to be affected by our cuts. To maybe have some input and say that where do they feel they could manage? And one of the things we decided to cut was lots of stuff for the, you know, we felt maybe a lot of the things that we do could be handled by the community trust. Not only were we trying to get an extra work, we're cutting their budget too. So I think we, I think we've been a great strike so far, I think there's a little bit more work to do. I'm very aware of time in February, so I think we should probably have another meeting in January perhaps to go to this again, which is always painful for everybody, but that's my thoughts and worth, thank you.
I see. Um, totally agree with it, because I was on the working party, that working party, and in my opinion, it was the first of a few meetings that we're going to have. And we haven't come to a budget agreement, we've had some discussions about it. As far as I'm concerned, those budget considerations should continue with another meeting or if, if necessary, another meeting until we finalise what we're. We haven't come to a budget agreement, we've come to some suggestions and we need more meetings. We've come to some suggestions and we need more meetings. I agree.
Yeah, I agree with Gordon's and Steve's.
Okay, then.
But also, you know, about what he said about, he spoke to some members of the public. I think we do need, you know, the people that we connect with and work with, the different organisations that we give money to for the benefit from our support, we do need to talk to us. And also, you know, councillor Hughes says, I think, at least it's been an openness. People need to know what is spending, how proud she's out, what council is doing, more than just a very simple...
When we finalize the budget, it will be open to everybody, but we haven't finalized the budget. We've just talked about it at an initial meeting.
We need input, well, I believe is the kind of sort of terminology, stakeholders, community, people. And youth connect and people, organisations and that.
Yes, Brian.
Yeah, I too have concerns about the reduction in the sort of community budgets, shall we say, that we proposed. I mean, we do have some difficulties in our fixed costs arising the youth provision thing that was mentioned by a member of the public earlier. We are being asked to spend more towards youth provision, whereas when we first became a council, you know, there was nothing that we could charge others. And now, we are being asked to, asking our residents to help pay for a lot more of that than we were before. So, you know, those are the difficulties. We, the budget we came up with in the meeting, as I say, I don't think was a sort of final thing. We won't know the final figures until we get the tax base figure from Baines, which is normally around Christmas time. So, once we've got those figures, we can be a bit more accurate in what lies we need and hopefully we'll be able to put a bit more back into the community.
Yes, Michael.
Yes, I agree with what's being said, that the main point was that clearly, after the point where we're going to be passing any kind of budget, we definitely need at least one more meeting, if not more. What I would like to pick up on, what Alex said, which I thought was, he made some excellent points, was the sums of money we're actually talking about, whether this can be conveyed to the public. The bandy precept for town council is about eighty pounds a year, is it?
It's a hundred, no?
Whatever, okay, but go on. One hundred, yeah. That do, you know, means...
Sorry?
It's one oh six.
One oh six.
Large sums appear because Baines's council tax is being mentioned so much. Even if we put up our council tax by twenty percent, you know, twenty pounds a year is undesirable, but it's not exactly a train crash. So, we've got to make sure that we distinguish our kind of sums from Baines's kind of sums, which are completely different matters. You know, we can make, managing communication or model it under the discussion. I think it would be a good thing.
Pre-suspense standing orders for them.
And I just wanted to ask a question as to whether you've looked into the context of your peer councils, across Baines, the precept that you set. I mean, I obviously come from a no-view perspective. And so, I'm asking a question, you know, I might play the devil's advocate a little bit and I'm not suggesting I sway your thinking, but your bandy precept is lower than some of the very small councils like Coon Hay and Freshford and Newton St Lo, believe it or not. I mean, it's economies of scale, so they're obviously having a lot less services because there's less people. But in comparison to your peers, which is Westfield, Porton, Peasdown, probably Radstock, your precept is very low, particularly in comparison to Radstock. I just thought I'd throw that out there because, you know, the cost of living is rising and you want to continue providing services to the community, so you need to find that balance. So, I thought it might help to know that.
Re-stand standing orders then.
I would like to reply to that, really. It's one of a selective list of people to be compared with. How much is the town council precept in Bar? Zero. Where does the missing precept stand in relation to the average precept across Baines? I don't think we want to get too sway. I think we want to have our own level. And if it's below Radstock, so be it, absolutely.
Can I respond to that? Just very quickly. I agree, but there are very few councils in Baines that are similar size to you to compare with. That's why I chose the ones that I did. If you look at the west of England, which is the area that I cover, I have a precept of two hundred and thirty-nine pounds a year for one of my councils. So, the average nationally, I think, is around ninety pounds. And six thousand at the parish councils in nationally are under twenty-five thousand a year precept income. So, the councils of your size are relatively few in terms of the number of councils. Does that make sense? Yeah?
Yes.
It's so varied, it's so difficult to make a comparison, but I chose your peers in terms of electrics, et cetera.
So, you're saying we're better off than other people?
No, no, I'm not making a judgment. I'm telling you, I'm giving you factual information that your precept is low in comparison to your peers.
That was standing orders, Brian.
Well, just to, I'm just looking that up. Radstock is one pound fifty-six as opposed to our one pound and six. So, you know, there may be room for improvement, I suppose.
Room for discussion there, but there are a lot that are lost more than...
Well, we've been talking about having another meeting, haven't we? Because we haven't come up yet with a final decision on this. So, shall we go with that, that we're going to, somebody like to propose that we organize a meeting? Right, right. Okay, so Gordon proposes that Steve second it. Everybody happy to have a second, make another meeting? Yeah, okay, that's right.
When we finalize it, we'll publish it.
That, yes. Okay, okay.
Can we, sorry, can we agree a timeline to that? Because we did discuss this three weeks ago, another meeting and nothing's come around. So, I think we need to put some deadlines to these meetings.
Does anybody think there's time before Christmas? I mean, being realistic. You're not going to be here, I know.
You could do a change. We need to have it done by February, is that correct? Or not?
Yeah.
So, we're going to have it early January?
So, we could have a couple in January if necessary, couldn't we?
Yeah, definitely.
Especially after we've found out what numbers are actually given, like I mentioned, which really has given possibly a change quite a few parameters around discussions.
Early January, yeah.
Yeah. So, two meetings possibly, however many we need in January.
Not a second.
Is that the day you get back?
Not a second, all the way.
Okay. All right, then. So, we're all happy with that, so we'll go on, okay. So, item one-six-nine, protocol for formation and operation of working groups. Now, that really has really helped you along, didn't it? You wanted to form a working group?
Yeah, it could just...
Clear instruction, well, not instruction.
You can just back the workers.
Yeah. Parameters for formation, so you know exactly where the council is, how it is done, the council is holding, where it is done.
Yeah.
Give you clear guidance on how to set one up, what we can do, formation of...
I read it, some interest. So, I think, yeah, if I did it very well put together, I feel it might be aimed at slightly more formal working groups. There are quite a lot of restrictions that would be imposed on the parties if it were to be set up, which I feel for the sort of groups that I feel that would help our council work, these kind of groups might be too restrictive. So, we talk about having to perhaps, I can't remember if it's a meeting public or not, but maybe invite people in the public into and have to be core it and things like that. So, I think for some, for some groups, these things would be really good. And I think for some work the council does, we should also always remember we can just call ad hoc groups of people to discuss things and bring them to council as well. So, there's two different ways. This is a more formal group. I think it's obviously very useful for making formal recommendations.
Yeah, you mentioned ad hoc groups, which sort of refer back to members of the public being, I would see members of the public, non-council members, being, having a particular skill or knowledge that we, that the working group would need, not just members of the public that we rest out, so I grabbed a scrap from that and brought them in and said, sit down and take part. So, I see them as being needed. When they're needed, they're found and they're brought in for the public.
That's the, that's the brains. God, I'm glad I'm sitting there, Pete.
Right, so where do you want to go then?
Yeah, I propose to the exorcist.
I don't think we should accept this at the moment. Why is that right? I don't think we should adopt this protocol for the formation and operations of working groups at the moment. I feel it's going to help. That's just my opinion.
Don't you think that having sort of like a set of rules, if you like?
I don't, I think, I think...
Would be better.
I think some of the rules from me, from looking through it, are too restrictive. And I feel that sometimes by going down through it, which is not statute, these are self-imposed rules. Statute rules are ones that you can't get around. This is our own policy, we're creating this policy. And I felt that some of the rules that are being put on these parties could be restrictive. And I think for that reason, I don't feel that these would be ideal at the moment. I tend to find that more restrictive some of the policies are, we end up being bound by them. And we should always remember the fact that apart from statute, we set our own policies, even understanding orders can be changed if we chose to. So, that's why I don't feel this...
So, what part of it made you think that it wasn't for us?
And there were issues to being cored. And so, I don't think that, I don't feel that working parties like that need to be cored, because they can only make recommendations. And so, only two people can meet to discuss something. In order to bring it to full council, to pass as a resolution, I wouldn't like to think it was being impeded by the fact that only two people were there. And anybody can bring something to full council. So, this really just had to fall over a discussion. So, I don't think, I think some of it is too strict, that's what I felt.
We have lots of working parties before and we've always had a cored number on those working parties, haven't we?
There should be a core, you're not done.
Yeah, we've always had a cored number on there and that's never held us back. But I don't think we've ever had a restrictive protocol before on it. But certainly cored number we've always had. When it stops anybody, let's be honest, you just get a couple of people get together and then bring that to councils, it'd be from that working party. But in a way, the core thing restricts that. And, you know, I'm not against the core number personally.
And Brian then, Pete.
I think the number of people who are on the working party is being determined by the council when they set it up. And I sort of feel that perhaps the quorum for that should be decided at the same time. If it's a very specific issue, that you might only have two councillors working on because they're, you know, that's their specialism or whatever, then, you know, there wouldn't be any need for a core of three members. So, I can sort of see where Gordon's coming from, but I'd like the quorum to be agreed by by the council when they are setting up the working group.
Okay, and Pete.
I'm just thinking, I've been called a protocol, guidelines. I think Gordon worried about the formal assignments or guidelines, just giving you just guidance of how we should run it, not exactly how you should run it.
Well, I'd like to go back to the person that's kind of keen, but belligerent, some people say. But so, for instance, there's lots of rules in here and these are rules that we're choosing. So, for instance, a working group will not have a budget. The budget will remain with the council or parent committee. So, we're going to set policy that makes that so. Why do we want to be restricted by such a thing? Why can't we decide at some point? And now it's a decision to be made, they're not saying the decision will be made. Why can't we decide at some point, we'd like to set up a working group with a small budget to solve a problem, but now we're putting in a policy, it won't. So, I don't see why we need that level of restriction. I don't see what benefit that brings to us. And I think there's a few things like that as well that I just don't think are necessary to restrict ourselves by unless somebody could tell us what the benefits are.
If I can just go back to your just mention about the budget. In my email, I did mention that a working group cannot have delegated powers over having their own budget, which is why it's in this, it's in this protocol. A standing committee can have a delegated budget, but a working group can't have one?
The, they could, the council can set a budget that it wishes to spend. Yeah, we can make a resolution to say we're going to spend five hundred pounds on flowers. And a working group could then be tasked with finding the best arrangement of flowers within that budget, which would then go back to council. So, I hear what you're saying, the working party can't just go and take five hundred pounds and spend it. But the council can set a budget and the working party can deliberate at its leisure the best way to achieve the aims with, as the council says.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. It's not being unsimple, but not...
Yeah, it doesn't say that in here. It just says that you can't have the budget.
You can't actually have a budget to decide on anything.
The working party can't spend money.
Financial decisions are made by the council. But the working party can work on it.
I could have a...
And as a public, the terms of brackets would indicate possibly that there is the brackets of funding which the council or the committee wants the working party to think in terms of. But the working party can't do anything, can't affect in any way the expenditure in that country. Otherwise, you have the walking on between two cops.
And if these, if these working parties or working groups, I'm not sure there's a distinction between groups and parties, if they don't have the power to spend money, don't have a budget and they don't have, they've not got the delegated authority to pass resolutions like a committee, why do they need to be bound by any of these protocols? Because they are effectively talking shops, which is very useful. And so, why would they need to, why would they benefit from this document which says things like, you know, it gives them lots of rules and stuff, but why do we need rules over and above the fact we can't spend money and we can't pass resolutions? I'm not sure of the advantages of being bound by some of these. You know, members of the public will be invited to join the working group itself following an advertising application process. I don't know if that needs to be put in a policy. Again, don't want to come across awkward, but I'm not sure that what this brings, that we don't have already, maybe that we're just not kind of getting it.
I think it'd just be bringing clear parameters and boundaries for the groups.
So, at the moment, we don't...
Everybody knows where they're standing. At the moment, there isn't parameters, there isn't boundaries. So, it puts it into one place, so everybody knows, the council knows where it stands, the working group... it stands, the working group knows where it stands, this is what you're, you know, you're going to do.
Okay. And so, I'm thirteen, the working group will have a budget. Is there any need for that clause if they couldn't have a budget? So you're saying it's illegal anyway. So then why would be specified?
That just makes you dread.
I'm just saying, I don't know, I, I tend to find that sometimes it's difficult to do things because you accidentally create policies which stop us doing things. And then, as somebody is always wanting to get things done, I'm always very, I try to be careful about not creating things that could restrict us going forward. So that's my, that's my record.
So would you suggest we should not say budget, but budget value?
Maybe, I'm not sure.
Because that's not giving you money, it's not giving you anything. It's the value you're going to work to. If you're not giving anything, you're just giving a value.
That's fair. I mean, I think to, to cut a long story short and to save everyone's time, I think that if this was passed, if you really wanted to pass it, it, it may be useful for certain working parties, I feel, to get that. And I think that's why it's a useful document. I also see there being value in ad hoc groups then, which are not necessarily bound by these, which form a similar role, but in a less formal way. Is that sound reasonable?
I think it would use of, you know, the lack of to commit to, to know what the protocols are, what the formation of the working party is. And just kind of about number seven, members of the public will be invited to join by working group itself, following an advertising application process. So is that, does that happen at the moment or is that, is that a new thing? So if we set the working party, somewhere we have to advertise it publicly, it's there?
Yeah, so it can, I think it's-
It has to be advertised.
It can be advertised and then it's down to the working groups to decide who they want to have on there.
But it has to be published somehow.
It, and I think it does say on there if it's time constrained, if one of the other ones, time dependent on number one.
What sort of form does that take, advertise in the-
It's just been out on the website and on social, notice board and website and social media. It says that you're forming a working group for, say it's the youth, you have done somebody else who'd be interested in that, could come and give you advice.
So if we knew of somebody who could be used for that working party, we would still have to advertise it in case somebody else wanted to come along and-
Yeah. It's down to the members of the group as to who they want to take on there. And it doesn't necessarily have to take them on there, I think it does specify in the document.
Right, so are we going ahead with this, accepting the, adopting the protocol?
Yeah, let's get-
I'm, I'm gonna, well, I haven't seen your one, that's very important.
Okay, fine, but someone proposed?
Sorry, it does seem, I'm just thinking of the youth side of it. We've set up a youth working party and it now sounds like we've got loads of hoops to go through. We haven't even organised a meeting yet. But to have a meeting, we've still got to advertise it. Doesn't say how long it would have to be advertised for before getting a meeting.
No, you don't.
And I thought the working party would meant to be more formal, it wasn't a committee.
Yeah.
So I'm now even confused what the working-
I don't think I'd advertise it, it's only if you want somebody, a specialist or somebody to-
I thought it was on the website and on the thing, which means it needs to be timed, then dated. It can't, it can't just be open ended, surely. If we want a meeting in the fortnight, there must be a date we have to advertise it by, but we close it by and we decide to take a meeting, surely not. I don't know, I'm confused. I thought the working party was informal.
But you've set up a formal youth working party.
Well, we're on a working party.
You've formed, you've formed an informal one, haven't you?
No, it's through this committee, through the council.
You've done that, right.
But what this says to me is, we now need to advertise that we're gonna have this working party, we need to invite the public, there's no dates, it doesn't say you need to give five days' notice or anything like that. So if we wanted to do this committed, the working party we're on for the youth, what, when could we do that? How could we do it? But I thought the working party was not formal. When the committee is formal.
I think if we send this to Christian, it's not that the working party must advertise its formation, it's only-
That's not what it said.
It's only if it's considered that a suitable member of the public would be evaluated to the working party, that that requirement would be-
No, that's not, that's not what it said. And it's not my understanding. This says that it needs to be advertised and an application process. So the question for me was, if we've got the working party, therefore there must be a date. If we want to have a meeting on a weekday, how do we advertise it? Saying we must advertise, Don has just said it's gotta go on the website, it's gotta be a poster. We don't know who's going to want to come before the meeting, before the date set. So surely it needs to be like, minimum five days' notice. And at that point, if anyone's applied or wants to get involved, then we can take it from there and then have a meeting.
But is the advertising of the formation of the party, say this is the working party that's been set up, to announce that?
No, I think it's been set, no, it's been set up and we invite them.
But this is, yeah, but that we can say it's for all working parties. So introspectively, you've got to advertise to say this is, these working parties are set up by the town council. We don't have to do it every time you think, yeah.
No, I think it's, I think it means that, yes, if you think, oh, we need to set this up as a working party, which is going to work for constantly, not, it's not just gonna be-
Which we've done.
Now, yes, you have, but-
So my point is, what date do we need to advertise for? Because it's not in here.
No, because you've already got yours going, that's one thing. But if you were setting up a new one now, after the protocol has been approved, then that's when you would have to bring in these rules and regulations, isn't it?
So what would the date, so if we now set this party up tonight, after this has been adopted, at what point do we need to advertise? And at what point can we close the advertising to then have the meeting?
I think that there isn't no specific time zone, that could be negotiable. Because I think one of the things in there is the working group, the terms of reference for the working group will be approved at full council or the committee before that working group meets. So there's gonna be a time delay in doing that. So that could be the time if he was to advertise to have other members of the public on the group, when the terms of reference are being devised, to go back to the council to be agreed or the committee.
In the past, we've never had to publicly advertise working parties. We've had to agree amongst ourselves and, and do it, go on with it. It's only council meetings, planning meetings, that we've had to publicly advertise. Working parties, we don't have the public.
It doesn't say that you have to publicly advertise working-
That's what Christian's trying to say.
Working group of hearts.
It doesn't even have to publicly advertise.
Well, you don't, you don't have the public to advertise.
So you require somebody extra.
If you were working-
Not by any require.
Well, in that case, point one should be made clear then, because it says, the opportunity for residents to join such groups will be made, time dependent, through certain areas et cetera. So it needs to be made clear that we, that process doesn't have to be longed to if not actually required by the working party.
Yeah.
No, but it, it doesn't say that.
No, that's right.
It's, it says members of the public will be invited, so therefore you have to advertise it, surely.
So do you want to maybe invited, will be, so may you say, change your will to may?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can if it's appropriate for them, or if it's not. Because we're saying now, to, to change what we have is that we have to publicly publish and invite, give an open invitation to people. Whereas we may already know people, there may be more extract, we just get on the working party with the people that are relevant to it. So I think it's better to make that, that's not clear there. It looks like point one and point seven, that we, we have to advertise it, we have to raise for, give an advertisement to people to public, for the public to know we want to be involved. But if we say maybe...
May, yeah. Change it will to may then, yeah?
I think Brian wanted to say-
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I was just waiting for that bit. I was going back, how many members of the working party are there for the youth?
Four, three and three. Do you have that three here then?
Three.
It's three.
I think they're pretty similar, but not doing anything.
I'm just, I'm just going back to this corem because this says that the corem will be three.
Yeah. So one of us can't attend.
So if one of you can't attend, it can't happen. But so I would like to, like for item nine to be made, given that it's necessary. That's my amendment.
Removed or reduced?
Reformed, is it?
Well, maybe not.
Remoted, removed, or reformed, is it?
I think we've not done any of this before. And no working party, we've had to. Sorry, if the working party can't decide anything, I'm now coming around to the, the way of, well, if the working party can't decide anything, why do we need this policy? No, no. Yeah, no, it's not said we don't have a working party. I've just said if a working party can't do anything, then it can bring it to full council. We don't actually need any of this. Because it's gotta bring it to full council regardless of what this says. It still can't do anything with this or without it.
You could have an ad hoc meeting, you could exactly do the same.
Yeah.
With no rules and regulations such as this.
Well, we seem to be going round in circles. Is that something that I can ask Deborah to do with guidance on? Is there anything you can talk to us about? I mean, I've never known a protocol to be a social problem, you know, because it just sets the context of the meeting. Everything that you've said is correct, working parties can't do anything. But as far as knowing where you stand, what everybody's, you know, the purpose of the meetings et cetera, it can only be a good thing. So that's my opinion. I, you know, I see it in all other councils, that they have working parties with protocols, that people know why they're there and what they're doing and who should be there.
The question was, did the protocol say that an officer must be at the working party meeting?
No, it doesn't, no.
Because that's, that's something that's caught us up recently, isn't it? We desperately needed to have a communication working party meeting, so we could get some, a recommendation to give to council. If we're able to have that meeting, we can get an officer to attend. I don't see what this solves. I mean, the biggest problem this seems to have come out of the communication working party, which I feel needs to be more agile. And when I say agile, I mean, not meeting once a month, because the news happens every few hours. We've got press releases, we've got giving to talk, websites update, we're all out doing stuff. This, you know, it happens all the time. So clearly the current system of parties and councils and committees is not quite, it's not quite suitable. So I'd like, what I wanted to see is some sort of system, some mechanism that gives us agility, which means interested councillors can respond quickly. And I don't think that does it. So I propose we do not adopt this. Move on, I think.
Is there somebody second that? You already had a proposal on the table from Richard, but you're going to propose to adopt it. So I think you just take that one first before you go to Gordon's. Okay then. So if we have one proposal to adopt it, do we have a second up for that, please?
So can I say that with any changes?
Yeah.
Change the will to may?
Yeah.
That's in seven oh one.
Number one oh seven.
Yeah, yeah. Right, so-
We've one reduce of course to two, for Brian's suggestion to make sure.
All right. So we've got a proposal and a second up. So who's up for that then, please? One, two, three, four, five, six. And not? One, two. Okay, we're going ahead then with that right in hand. And I would just like to point out, we're virtually half a state. We've got 11 items to go and we've only got half an hour. So item 170, communications officer, asking you to note that Gordon has resigned as volunteer, volunteer communications officer, and a big thank you for all you've done.
Well, I'd say, you're very welcome. And I just wanted to say a couple of things about this resignation. I don't see it making huge difference. I see it as a re, redefining the role I was doing, which had strayed, as Don correctly pointed out, strayed into the boundaries of becoming almost like an employee, which was clearly dysfunctional. And I will continue going around town, taking questionable quality pictures, holding my selfie stick and trying my best to promote council, updating the website and updating socials, which we all should do. And our social media policy allows us to get involved. And I can be a conduit for people that need help doing that. I'll continue to help staff. Had a fantastic meeting with Amanda, she was parlaying, really enthusiastic, really keen to learn more skills so they can take more of the burden of updating the website. I've automated as much as I possibly can to make it easy. And I do want to remind everyone that, that, you know, when we, this whole thing started from we needed a new website, and then we had a budget for a communications officer. I did those two things. And I think that's really seen the council hopefully save £20,000, which I would like to see ideally spent on useful stuff. And I don't know if that's gonna be possible. But in the meantime, for, for your free medium communications officer, we've seen a fourfold increase in people visiting our websites from a thousand a month to four and a half, or five thousand a month. And even our latest YouTube video short of the Christmas market, it's a 700 views. So always getting the Midsummer Norton name out there. And we've now got mailing lists, we've got MailChimp, we've got lots of social media stuff going on, Wikipedia et cetera. So I don't plan on stopping, but I think the definition, I think, I totally agree, has to change. That, you know, I'm not in a situation where I'm being asked to do something sad and all the rest of it. So I hope to continue in the same vein and a slightly differently defined goal.
Well, thanks for all you've done. And I think every one of us understands what good job you've done. Yeah, thank you. So on, item 171, to consider the refreshment request for all council meetings.
Yes, I, I thought of this, there was a coincidence when Baines removed the refreshments for councillors before a council meeting. And we started it, gave it a try. And having experienced in Baines, the successive council meetings now, without, what happens actually is that you normally turn up about 5.30 to have a, your own group meeting to decide how you're gonna handle the forthcoming council meeting, which starts at 6.30. So you're then, you're definitely refreshment free from 5.30 to, you know, 10, that sort of thing. But that's, that's important in a way than, actually, I don't see anybody from another party now. I don't meet as fellow human beings and colleagues and people who share political interests and so on, in the same way as I used to, which was, which was actually useful. I can remember at first arriving in Midsummer Norton and cheering when some opinionated character managed to stop wine being served on these occasions. Probably a good thing, but actually, not, not completely wrong that, that there was that kind of thing going on. We've had our own difficulties in relationships between, you know, councillors and, and staff. And I, I think a little bit of convivial refreshment before a council meeting would be a second line direction.
Nice then. Yep. Any comments?
That's a good idea.
Of course that.
Yeah. Yeah, second, yeah. Well, Michael and Gordon. And as in favour?
So is it gonna be a good job for you to-
As you know this. Why is that for your working party?
I think the others there should do it.
Yeah, so can we just have, have- No. Can you, those in favour again? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay then. So item 172, the memorial tree request. So the request to put the tree in?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
It is, it's fascinating, isn't it?
I can't believe all the paperwork is going to be put in a couple of trees.
Yeah. Are we gonna have to do the same with our trees? No, but I mean, being serious, it is fascinating, isn't it?
Yeah.
And you can understand why they want to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we have to say-
So they choose where they, from the selection of locations.
Where we bring it further to go.
They, they, they would choose where they want it to go.
Or can we, do we have to say-
So under recommendation, it's members to consider the request from the children to plant trees in their memory and mind of the town council's policy, suitable trees in position to be considered using town councils' tree planting opportunities document. So you need to decide where they're gonna be.
And can I, can I propose that we get back to officers, the decision on where the trees go? Uh, having this lot discussed, uh, I don't know if there's any great fruit for. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Could pass it over to the, the officers?
Oh yeah, yeah. Like we include the other two that, you know, you have, we've given two.
Yes.
One to the north, given two.
Yeah, we've got two hazels, if you could do the same for them.
Yes, yeah, good.
Probably your two trees. Um, native flower and cherries.
Oh yeah, that's.
Yeah. Okay then, right, so um, on to one seven three, team Christmas party at unit fourteen, which is next.
When's that?
That's the one next weekend, isn't it?
No, no, this is, so the town council last time was off to give the two hundred pound for the ice skating.
Yes.
They don't need the two hundred pound for the ice skating, so they've got to re-purpose a hundred pound of it to supply uh, pizzas and co-op for the Dungeons and Dragons game. New club that they do on, on that night. The dates are to, to be decided in one of their sessions. So it was just to re-purpose the two hundred pound and split it between the two events, so you'll support both of those.
I wish that's next.
Yeah, Gordon, prefer Steve second.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay, everybody. One seven four, signs for the high street. They do look good though gently, don't they?
Again, this was something that was going back, um, probably eighteen months ago with um, the contractors, they was going to get the signs together. Um, they have to revise, so there's a quote from um, Andy King at ULE to draft all the text for him and then from Fitzpatrick to design the boards for the river.
Yeah, good. His price is one thousand one hundred and fourteen. That is for his work. To be, to develop the sign.
Yeah.
But the actual sign price is nine hundred and seventy-six.
Yeah.
For one, it's two grand.
Well, you'll have the, you'll have the information which will be used on however many boards you decide to, to have.
Excellent, right then. Where's this cap in, they're talking of, isn't it? It would be like two stone cap in, to the side of the river.
So you've got the railings, something going on the river, would, it needs to decide the exact location, that it's probably going to need some.
It'll be on the shore.
Yeah, either on the floor or onto the railings themselves.
It's as if it's just in the first part, it's like they would find some clamp and devices to go on to the railings. One end, in fact, two ends of the, of the river, one down that far end and one at this end, so.
Go from the railings back to the.
Yeah, you just clamp them on there, don't you?
Yeah. It's a kick and groove.
There's a point in the number of people who do stand alongside the river saying, oh, look at that mud wall, that is. I've heard it itself, lots of times.
Yeah. But when I say kick and groove, I wasn't joking there, is it going to be strong enough for someone wants to go on and kick it? Because it's going to be on a river where people's going to come out and make use of whatever else, of whatever's possible thing.
It would probably have the way of that, because it would be all two ends and then.
Under the product features, it does say that it's a stainless steel construction.
Nothing's in dissection, is it? Yeah. But the, the end of the river.
I have.
Yeah.
All over, boy.
Do we need to, it's obviously been in the pipeline for some time, is there any urgent need to make a decision on this right now?
No, it's just something that's been in the pipeline for a long time, it's not going to push, so.
Fantastic. Because I would suggest that, because we still have um, the budget to agree and a few other things, that if we don't have to decide this of spending right at the moment, it might be a good thing.
This is in the current.
This is already the current budget, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, the, well, yeah, we can form about current budgets and, and, and future budgets, it's, it's all money.
Michael.
Well, I was going to say, this is not the budget which we're discussing, this is the current budget. We decided then, it's a good thing, I think it still is.
It's twenty-nine. Twenty-nine. Yeah, so um, can we come up with a decision on this?
I would, I would enjoy it, yeah.
Okay, and everybody agree with that?
Just a question. Gordon mentioned about the logo on the last one, is there a logo on there?
No, there isn't.
It's not been designed yet, but we'll make sure it goes on, on there.
I'm afraid.
And so how many signs are you looking for?
Two.
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 So who's in favour? Yeah, no, Gordon's not, and the rest of you are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Right, one seven five, planning committee meetings, to consider changing the day of the planning committee meetings to the third Monday of the month. You've all seen why, and, you know, it's not going to alter anything else. So, and to give delegated authority to the clerk for planning applications that fall outside of our council meetings.
Can I raise one point, just to jump in there with Don already? And that is to reassure members that by giving you delegated authority, that doesn't mean you're just going to run away and sort of approve all the housing estates without a curve. And what it does allow us to do is to discuss things in a, in an emergency situation and then give you the authority to, to comment on our behalf. And actually, it's very common, if you look through the planning applications from other parishes, quite often the comments are made by the clerk. So I think that's what's going to happen, so just to.
Right, I, I think this is a brilliant idea, actually, um, to get around the issue. Um, this is a suggestion, a proposal put through a few meetings ago, that we have an extra, extra meeting. And I think this is a good way of actually sticking with the two meetings and being able to comment on most of the planning applications. So I support it.
Okay, so proposal? Gordon, one second, everybody happy with that? Yeah, brilliant, okay, we'll move on then. One seven six, the constituency boundary review. I think everyone was in favour, wasn't they?
Well, I hope so, and I hope everybody has, I'm looking at the public gallery, I'm hoping everybody has gone to DCE reviews and made their public comment, because the, the deadline is today and if we miss the opportunity to have Midsomer Norton's name in our constituency, then that's silly stuff. Well done, I'll be going through the comments when they're published and I shall be asking people who didn't comment, why.
My, my, that someone else did.
I'm afraid I opted that, I didn't want to be in days. Okay, so we need to move on from there, just move through. Yeah, all approved on the, on the break, yeah? So one seven seven, Santos Grotto, consider the funding request from the community trust for Santos Grotto.
So again, this was a re-purpose of the two hundred pound that was allocated for the Christmas light switch on there, but it didn't happen to uh, defer it to the community trust for the Santos Grotto event, which is taking place on Saturday.
Am I, of course, that's why.
Yeah, okay, second up, anyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, brilliant. One seven eight, whatever walk, the work's on the path, yeah, considering, the work's on the path. Then Pete.
May Mike's discussed it, I'm sure many people have as well. They've designed that path. Did they consider what would happen when it gets wet? But you, Mike's, they'll go about building and stuff like that, Mike's done it clearly, and you normally put tram under something like this to stop your sinking, materializing into the mud. And it also keeps, it consolidates the stuff you put there.
Yeah.
It would appear, without actually looking at it at the time, that they might not put tram underneath.
What we've noticed as well, the, the entrances into on the lower rock side down by the uh, bridge, they're actually very muddy, and the other day when I went down, there's actually puddles seeping in, in the pathway itself. It says to me, it's not, it's not done properly.
So before we go and give money to someone else to correct the fault that should have happened, should they confirm to us they built it the way it should be built?
They have already confirmed that it was built to the specification that was given to them. And that specification was signed up by the council when we've put the plans forward. So we have the well of a walk plans, where the benches was going, the type of the path, the material that was going to be used. That was put through to council and it was agreed by everybody. And um, Andy King has actually been down and it has been built to the specification that they was instructed to build it to. It's just, there is obviously the issue with the uh, surfacing, um, and the, the coarser material. Um, I think it was issues to do with the uh, dry weather when it was laid and it doesn't feel that it's wholly then responsibility for the fact that the sun areas, it's, you know, coarser, the longer areas, and this is the solution that they've come up with as to how to rectify that.
I don't think by putting this new material down there will rectify the problem in the long term.
You have the self-confident gravel they use with the town park.
Yeah.
It's going to be underwater.
Yeah, it, it did look right from this, but we've put it down.
And I have made some.
The wrong sort of weather and the wrong, you know, conditions that, that helped it water me. It looked, you know, I, I was shocked at the help given to it. We've been through all that thing, but the, the gravel was wrong digging within, it's just continued to be wrong. If, if, we don't need that large gravel, there's no way that's going to settle or, or, to me, as somebody who's no bad at this thing. You know, it looked wrong, it was beginning, it's just collected and people have ended up walking and wearing away the grass in the side of the paths, or stumple across. That, to me, it was like that rougher gravel needs to be taken away, make the higher path leaves leg, but I don't know, and I agree, you know, we're puddles. When it rained, and it was just there for all weathers, we know it's going to increasingly wet and, you know, the weather's going to get worse over the years, so, so there would be puddles along, along that path, and the entrance ways are not consistent, not consistent, no. So I don't think we should be liable.
I can, yeah, except it's true, because the pillar plant cannot be held fully liable for further work, but I don't feel we can trick that. Because you're right, we might approve it, but we didn't approve it, it's muddy. We didn't prove it helps it settle, so I kind of feel.
It's just standard practice, or in disruption, if you've got boggy ground, you, you fill it with stone, I've got a hire the job in the Trewbridge in um, basin centre where we have boggy ground, we couldn't get the lorries in. You put the tram down and put the stone on top, I'll tell you, it's unbelievable what it does.
It's solid.
It's like a raft. I mean, I feel this is an argument really between me and the pillars, and so that we've came to mind, if you didn't ask this, can you? Sorry, that's my thing.
So we'll see if we have an assault meeting, really, with, you know, with somebody like Pete and Mike could go down and be our representatives or something like that.
Why can't it get longer?
Well, with, with, and we take a plant, and they could discuss the problem and see what they come up with.
They have been back down to site and, and, and they did meet them down there.
Yeah, but not with, not with our representatives.
No. What I feel like is a bit like the dump in the town hall. The problems there, if we don't rectify it now, it's just going to get worse. You're going to stick another five, five, five on top of it again next time, next year, after another.
Of course, it, it's true that it was put down at a very bad time for doing that, because it would have, in normal circumstances, it would have, the rough would have gone into the grave a lot more than what it's done, it's just stayed on the surface.
Yeah, but even, even that's big, with boggy ground, it, it doesn't matter what grade you've got, you can put, you could put four inch, well, it's all created in types, like one, two, three and four, on concrete objects. And it goes in the ground, and you, you normally put a heavier basin in the bottom and a looser basin at the top. But if you've got boggy ground and you're using that as for tra, traffic, or even footfall, it will sink. And that's what's happening out there, it's going down, it's going down into the mud and you'll end up with mud on top of, out of there.
So we need to go back to them and talk to them?
I think so.
Okay.
And if you were to, could meet them, they'd see what the problem is.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I went down, I thought we'd try and get across, I can't even get up to the entrance now because it's muddy. And especially two entrances coming in, one by the bridge and one where it used to be.
Yeah.
You can't get through it. When they designed it, they should have took in consideration the landscape and the surrounding water.
They took a trench and put hardcore in.
And I don't think they have.
Well, that's sort of push on, but we've only got ten minutes, so one seven nine, broad application for the Musicians South West CIC.
I think it sounded quite nice if we had a few existing ground objects in this area.
Yeah. Sounds like a good.
We, we have done it in previous years and they, they've done it. And it's well, you know. A pretty shaky way people have, it's, it's something good for what we're doing.
Yeah. So proposal, Steve secondly, Gordon, everyone in favour?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, brilliant. Right then, well, we now move on to the confidential area, where I'm afraid we're going to have to say goodbye to Richard, it's sure and the other gentleman, I'm not sure I know his name.
Matt.
Matt. Okay.
Thank you very much, you were. Sure, Richard.